And also draft a letter of response to the fire marshal. I was given a little bit of direction to check on the possibility of egress windows, things like that falling into depreciation. I am very encouraged by what I see here and by some of the discussions that I have had for that. I'm most encouraged about what I found out about lease purchasing, which is not something the board has explored before. I'm familiar with lease purchasing. It is capped at a certain percentage of funding available. It has to be paid off in a seven-year timeframe, so I know that lease purchasing does make a lot of districts nervous because it has to be paid out of your general fund or paid out of your building fund. And if it comes down to, you know, making a lease purchase payment or cutting staff because you don't have any flexibility in your general fund, then you have to do that. So I know it does make districts nervous, but with a possible increase in valuations and knowing that the two projects that are most critical according to the 16-point correction order are sprinklers and getting rid of that piping downstairs. Those are the two most critical issues. The fire doors, we have enough money in the building fund to take care of the fire doors. The dilemma with doing a sprinkler retrograde and then coming back maybe three or four years later and trying to do an HVAC retrograde is we're going to be tearing up all of those ceilings twice. That's the dilemma is that it would make extra work, extra money, all of that. So after visiting with Steve on a lot of these issues, I think he's given us some really good food for thought here with regards to the possibility of getting those two projects done possibly without a bond. Now, it doesn't address everything. Obviously, we still can't put kids in the basement. And I did enclose that in your packet as well. Okay, here's the long-term building grounds. And again, Brad was critical with this. He was chairman of this committee previously. So it kind of goes through the nine, 10 budget, 10, 11, 13, 14, 15, all of that right there. That's one. Then the plan of correction, our response order, that's included there too, so that we can go back and we can change some of those. Okay? Also included in here, the fire marshal's report, his response to our June 9 plan of correction. And then this is questions that the fire marshal wanted in writing, not verbalized, so that he could respond in writing and there was no possibility for miscommunication. So we point-blank asked him, if we put egress windows down there, do we need sprinklers? Okay? No, we could use the egress windows down there. Sprinklers are still part of other orders that didn't be, for example, our long hallways. This room, right here, the egress windows would have to be installed here too. We do not have a single room in the 30s, 50s, or 60s building that meets his need for students being able to escape out of a window. Okay, so...
I don't think I know as simple as far as I don't think sprinklers has to go around. There's just no one way around it because if you don't put the sprinkler system in, then you have issues with most every door and you have issues with about every, not every wall, but a lot of our walls.
And the windows.
Fire windows.
The windows are the secondary means of egress. So we asked him in this document, and this is the one I'm looking at where we've got questions in black, answers in red. So if we install the egress windows in the basement, will that eliminate the need for a sprinkler system? No, we will still need a sprinkler system. And he goes into detail there. Okay? Will egress windows be necessary if we have an automatic sprinkler system? Okay? Egress windows are not required down there if we have the sprinklers. There's not a good deal of natural light there. We're still worried about the ceiling height down there, but we can't find a building inspector yet. So the fire marshal has to come back and give us maybe some clarification there. Okay? We did ask that if we increase the number of fire drills, could we put students in the basement? No. Okay, well, if we increase the number of fire drills and we added the fire alarm detection and notification system, could we put the kids down there? No. If we added egress windows, could we put them down there? He did say yes, but then for clarification, we said, are the egress windows necessary if we get the sprinklers? He said no. So we went through these questions with him so that we could get a little bit more clarification for you as you try to write a report. But what I would like to hand to you, and I know this is a lot of reading, okay, but I'm going to try to highlight an area because again, I was very encouraged that lease purchase might be an option for using some general fund money and some building fund money. And you can even use QC puff money to pay back a lease purchase. And it's not a bond.
What kind of interest? Is lease purchasing, how kind of interest is that?
Okay, and that's another thing that I was really excited about, team, is the lease purchase is a negotiation with your local banker. So them understanding the dilemma that we are in here may really work to our advantage in a lease purchase situation. And I guess I was really excited too that, you know, there's so many rules that go along with funds. You can use this fund for this, you can't use this fund for that. You can transfer money from this fund to that fund, you can't do the reverse. There are so many rules that go along with funds. This lease purchase legislation, and Steve tried to put some specific statutes in here for you to review, is really, really wide open. And so as we worked to try to get those minimum two projects done, he feels that we've got a good deal of leeway. And I am thinking with those two projects, if we look at the general fund that's not expended, the money that we will have in the building fund by September of 2015, the money that, and we don't have much money, in the QC puff fund and the money that we have in the depreciation fund, because I was encouraged that with depreciation monies, we could buy depreciable equipment but couldn't pay for the labor because we do have some money in depreciation as well. If we look at all of those funds, we can do 70% of unexpended funds towards a lease purchase, make a deal with our local banker to get it paid off in a seven-year timeframe, and that's the maximum. And I think we could get those two projects completed with this creative mechanism.
How much money do you think we'll have in the building fund with next year's budget?
Next year would be hard to anticipate, Ryan. I know that at the end of this year, September, and schools are funny because they don't end the year in December, okay? We end the year August 31st, okay? But we should have an additional $700,000 in there, okay? By that end of, right now, and I had this one to look this up for us, as of January 19th, we had $457,556 in that building fund, the sinking building fund.
And then we would have an additional $700,000 in September, which is...
Oh, that would be total.
Yeah, well, well, there was carryover from the previous year. So probably $250,000 plus the $700,000. But the $250,000, we kind of earmarked the roof at Westward pretty bad, and they ballparked it. Again, we don't have bids on that because we were waiting to see what direction the bond vote took, but they ballparked it at $130,000 to replace that roof over there. Okay? That was a ballpark, not a bid. And of course, we don't do anything that's over $40,000 without getting bids. I like to do anything over $10,000 and get some bids because I think that competitive pieces is good for a board in securing the best pricing. We also have the units up there blowout. Apparently, something overheated, and again, it's outside of my area of expertise, but the Freon unit is no longer functional. So we are on emergency heat over there in our kindergarten classroom. And the other two, according to Flanagan, the other two units up there do not look much better. We will not be able to have air conditioning over there, according to Flanagan, and definitely in the one unit. He thinks, or said to Rob, and again, this is not a bid, but in the ballpark, $15,000 to $20,000 per unit. So we keep some money in that building fund for things that happen because things do happen around here. We also are taking the gym floor all the way down. It probably should have been done last year, but again, that black is surfacing, so when you take it all the way down, you sand it all the way down to bare wood, you come back, you paint, and then you let, and it looks amazing again. But that's about a $15,000 to $20,000 process as well. So that money in the building fund is kind of tagged for some of those projects, but still, that does give us about, possibly $100,000 that we have to work with, with the $700,000, which would be $800,000 if you were looking at a seven-year repayment and were able to put $800,000 in the building fund every year, then you know, you could do a five-point... So if you could get this creative financing, this creative lease purchase. Now, it does have in here specific school districts also that were creative with this lease purchase. The one that I am most familiar with and just talked to Ginger about this is the Scribner-Snyder case because again, the voters sued Scribner-Snyder for their lease purchase, and you can read through that. It's on page six of eight, but they were successful. The school district was successful that the lease purchase did fall under this as an appendage to the school district. And Steve really believes this is a way for you as a board to be creative. Now, of course, it is an option too to, you know, the total on the HVAC plus the windows plus the fire doors and those renovations, just those, which are part of the correction order. Brad, you want to help me? Was it just right at 3:00?
Yeah, I can't remember because of the, that's really just the eastward, the stuff for the westward, I never really, once that was. I don't think we've seen an exact dollar amount.
Well, again, none of those are exact dollar amounts, guys. They're all ballmarks.
It was windows, HVAC, and what else?
Yeah, I don't think windows.
No, windows were not in there. You don't need new windows if you get sprinklers.
But you said HVAC and what?
HVAC, sprinklers, and fire doors. The fire separation doors, they're really expensive. For our levels of building, we have to have...
For the stairwreck, whole movement.
For the stairwreck.
In addition to the sprinklers.
What's the difference, what's the difference in the cost in the basement between just putting egress windows in and not sprinkling it?
Okay, well, again, the egress windows, if we just put them in the basement, we have to put egress windows everywhere because none of our rooms meet code. So this room does not meet code.
The problem, I mean, you...
Every room would need new windows.
You can't get away with that. Dollar amount wise, because all your other problems, you have your dead-end quarters that can't be fixed with egress windows. You can't fix your, you can't fix all your doors because the changing, not putting a sprinkler system in causes you to have to put in different doors for the entire building.
And also storage areas needed special two-hour...
That was the main driving force on the sprinkler system, Dave. Granted, yes, you know, you could do the egress windows down the basement right now, but you're still going to have to address who's going to have the fire proof for the rooms, the storage closets. None of that, with a sprinkler system, all that stuff is exempt because it's fraud-based covering all them liabilities. If you do use the windows, it opens it back up, so those are all liabilities now and you have to address them. If we did egress windows up here, every single classroom has to be fire rated for two hours, like with every closet, every, every little no-congranted room up here. That was why he looked and pushed at the fire sprinklers so much because he knew it covered so many of these violations. You could, you know, and that's a discussion that's going to have to be had with the fire marshal also, you know, and what you could do in the near term with the basement with certain windows, different places to get occupancy down there until we get things taken care of. You know, that's, that's a discussion that could be...
But he has stated occupancy could have stayed down there. He said that as he's the authority and he said, put in some egress windows and kids can stay in there.
Right, right.
He thought for about two years until we could get the sprinklers, that that would be an option. But then again, he also said that the egress windows are not necessary if you do the sprinklers.
Right, so it comes back down to, you know, what you're trying to tell me is you cannot just egress the basement and sprinkle the rest? Is that what you're trying to tell me?
In the short term, yes, Dave, long term, no. Just after two or three years, I think he would come back on you and see if you're going to have, if you finish your job in the basement. You know, yeah, we could do that right now and get kids back down there, but if we didn't come back and button that up, I think he's going to, he's going to turn, turn on you. I, you know, that's just my opinion.
Well, maybe we should just grab a visit.
That's, I mean, that's discussion, that's, that's discussion.
And he said he'll review, now that review and prove are two different words, but he'll review anything we submit. So if we submit that we're going to put egress windows in the basement with the possibility of maybe doing sprinklers in two years, they'll review that. They'll do that. I don't know that they'll approve it, but they will review.
My other question is, Kim, how are things working in the classroom right now with where the students have been moved? I mean, my biggest concern right now is art. I know that art kids are really displaced. If we could get egress windows in the art room...
I would agree with that, Kenny. Art is my biggest concern as well because they're in the lunchroom right now. Well, you guys saw that because they were in the lunchroom having class when we went down there for lunch. And it's a beautiful room. I mean, it's got really nice high ceilings. Oh, it's, it's really nice room. Nice high ceilings, it's got a kiln area, she's got another separate area over here for storage and clay and, you know, with the ceilings being so high in there, I can't imagine us not utilizing that space in the future.
Well, that's what I'm saying. If we could egress that room and not necessarily focus on the other rooms right away, is that, does that alleviate some problems?
And I, that would alleviate a big problem because right now, Mary does her entire morning in the lunchroom with our high school kids, and then she'll go back and forth and get supplies as necessary. But with my elementary, since we can't have elementary, you know, in the lunchroom because they need it in the afternoon, and we've got lunch and tables out, and we haven't cleaned that area yet, she's doing basically art on a cart. So she's got a big cart that she pushes around with supplies, and she goes into the classroom and she delivers it that way. Well, that eliminates painting for my young people, it eliminates clay for my young people. So I would like to fix that, yeah, as soon as we possibly could. And, you know, of course, Ms. Marshall was displaced. She was down there in the Spanish room. She is right now in the distance learning room. It's a very small area. She's not necessarily in a happy zone, but I wouldn't say that the displacement is near what my, my art program is suffering.
On what April was talking on about not having room for kids taking those college courses, where, where can we open up? What could we do there?
That was typically where Ms. Marshall is. That was typically where she is. It's where we would have the distance learning classes, it's where we'd have college classes. Yeah, we don't have a spot for them right now, so they're kind of sharing between her room and the library as those things are available. Yeah.
So how long would it take, how long would it take to put a couple egress windows in the art room?
Well, they're really worried about the piping and things that they're going to run into underneath. You know, the architect was a little bit concerned about that, but it can definitely be explored.
Well, that's the architect, but the fire marshal, you know, he says clearly, if you put an egress window down the basement, we get kids down there. I mean, how long does it take to put in an egress window or two? What does it cost?
On a board, probably two, three months, maybe.
To put in an egress window?
Well, first of all, we've got to accept bids. We've got to cut out our bids.
Oh, you're talking about the time, I'm, I...
Yeah, you know what I'm saying? Yeah. Everything on a board moves slow. Patience is a virtue. I don't have a lot of, I'm learning to be more patient with it. But yeah, everything on a board moves slow because we've got to accept bids and then, and then we vote on that, and then we secure services, and then it's based on their time schedule, but, but we could get moving on it. That could be part of the plan that we write right here. And I do think that that would alleviate a huge...
Or...
It would, a huge concern because I, yeah, I would like to get...
We just have to explore what services are, you know, for utilities and everything and just make sure there's not something...
Well, they're worried about the piping right there that's coming into the building.
The piping outside of the building?
Yeah, a lot of utilities and stuff come in right there, Ryan, on that side.
Okay.
And the sewer main and water main.
I suppose if there's a window, they both have to be egress, Kim, you know, or...
What's behind it?
There's so many square foot.
You know, I don't know, Kenny. I don't know. We'll have to look into that because there can only be a certain height.
Right, you'll have to be so low.
Yeah, certain height. So yeah, that could be explored. Again, if there are sprinklers in the art room, we don't need the egress windows. And if sprinklers could be an actuality in May, as soon as our students leave, if we could lease purchase the sprinklers, that puts us leaps and bounds ahead of all of these concerns, the dead-end quarters, all of the rooms that need different windows that could wait for a future project.
But as we talked in the past, I mean, I'm not putting you on the spot, Brad, but as we talked in the past, you maybe commented to me that there's very few companies that do sprinklers. I mean, we're kind of, we're kind of in a corner? Or not, or yes, or?
Yeah, there's no, nobody local that does fire sprinklers. I mean, yeah, I mean, there's a limited number of personnel out there that do it.
That do it. So we're kind of at the mercy of who's ever going to do it? I mean, what are you going to get, two bids?
We should be able to secure more than that, I would think.
When they did the fairgrounds, you had to put sprinklers in out there?
Right, Ryan. We're not subject to bids on that, I believe. Don't quote me, we had two different projects. I think Bullseye did it. I'm not 100% sure on that because we had to do a fire, a roof vent, had to have fire extinguishers and everything, and somebody did that and then also somebody did the sprinklers.
Okay.
There, like, see, I think there's, I can't remember the other, there's two main companies if I remember right. I remember the other one saying...
Yeah, I don't know, I guess my thought is, I don't want to say it's a waste of money, but there's no reason to spend, I'll throw in a number, $30,000 to $90,000 for an egress window and then turn around and have to put in sprinkler anywhere.
Well, I guess what I'm getting at is, you know, I, all right, I've talked to a couple senators down there, and they have made a comment that the fire marshal knows that access saves lives, sprinklers save real estate. And I know that. And I've had board members from other schools tell, basically tell me this, you know? So the question becomes, if the fire marshal's going to give you leeway, it really comes down to we need, we need to have two dollar amounts to work with. I mean, we need to have a, a budget of, if we chase the egress windows and, like you said, whatever else, doors and whatever else versus a budget of if we chase sprinklers. I mean, does anybody know, is there $100,000 difference between those two, or is there $50,000, or is there a million dollars difference between the two?
I don't remember him putting a dollar amount to it. I remember him saying, "Don't be close."
Because I don't, you think it's a, I'm, I'm not, you're guessing it was about a wash?
No, he said, "Don't be close." He said, "You're going to be way ahead with the sprinklers."
I think, I was in one of them meetings, Brad, and I think that was the whole deal, David. Just hearing him go through everything else that we'd have to fix spooked us enough to not even want it.
He said, "It wouldn't be," because I asked...
It could be double.
What's the dollar amount? Should I put a, should I put a... Should we do egress windows? It's going to be, the fire door has to be rated, each window, each wall, and I, where are we? He goes, "It won't even be close." He goes, "You're going to be far ahead of putting these sprinklers in."
The sprinkler, it has to go in each room and then in the hallway too, is that...
Yeah, that's right. And then, you know how this school's made, there's a lot of narrow janitor closets and things. Them are all subject to the same regulations also.
And storage was even higher.
Right, because there's combustible...
On fire rate because of the combustible nature of the chemicals. And we had storage in the balcony areas in the old gym, and we had to immediately remove all of those items because we didn't have a cover, a door, and he didn't give us any leeway on that.
And some of them are open to multiple floors. They're not closed off there the whole, whole way up through.
Quite a bit.
But I mean, that's, I guess that's up to the, up to the committee ultimately to research on that, but that's something that could be pursued, Dave. I mean, I'm not saying to not look at it, but I'm kind of with you. On the basement issue, if we knew that we could get something figured out on a lease purchase where we could tackle a couple of these big projects and take care of a lot of the problems and get it done in an efficient and fast manner, then I want to be so worried about chasing the egress windows. If it's going to take us a year and a half, two years, yes, then I definitely want to approach egress windows. Like I said, that's just my personal opinion on it.
Did you want to take a minute as a board to read through Scribner-Snyder? And I really found that situation to be somewhat similar to ours, not exactly, because of course, we're not looking to add six classrooms, but I'm going to give you a minute to read that and below that, the points to consider. agreement is that you could use general funds to pay a lease purchase payment back because typically the general fund is not to be used for major building renovations and major building improvements. With a lease purchase, we're able to go that direction and use some general fund monies and also our building fund monies. I wouldn't want to use general fund monies if building fund monies covered that lease purchase, but this piece was exciting to me if we could get those two very necessary fire marshal projects completed at the same time so we didn't tear up the ceilings twice. And I do think $700,000 this year, just on that figure, you know, it says whatever's unexpended from that figure, and we have not spent anything of the $700,000 by September 2015. If it is based on that amount, that would cover, I mean, it's within that 70% of unexpended funds to get those two projects complete on a seven-year payment cycle. Unfortunately, if the legislature or anything took a turn not in favor of rural school districts, you know, it might be cutting things a little, little bit in future budget cycles, but right now seems doable. And like I said, I was very encouraged by Steve's creativity with state statute here. I don't know if Brad, maybe it does not necessarily take care of our issues at Westward.
What was moving to Westward? I know the one dead-end corridor in kindergarten come to light. Was that the one main thing that the sprinklers were taking care of over there, or were there other issues?
And then the one door, and our work makes it basically right off the gym, that corridor is a problem because of the way it was put in because you're never supposed to be able to go do a door and then have to figure out, you have to go to another.
Go to a door and another one.
We also have some classroom space that's not approved over there, Kenny.
Right, no windows or any, a lot of the...
Yeah, the title of this bedroom.
Titles, yeah.
Yeah, but we look at everything point by point and then talk about maybe what's already addressed so that we could write that in our report. We have a little bit of time to try and maybe go through this so we can draft a plan. I know that Ryan, Chair of Building and Grounds, probably wants to spend a little bit more time on this with his committee.
Did we ever, are you looking at utilizing... Did we ever, are you looking utilizing architect or assistance in this?
I called the fire marshal, and we have a meeting set up with him on Friday at ten, and to go through this to get a little bit more understanding of what he's asking and what he thinks is acceptable, so we can get some type of plan together to see what we need to do, you know, so we can move ahead. And that's the, that's my idea, is that we can get more explanation on some of these issues, you know?
Like I said, unfortunately, there's not just the fire marshal issue, and that's where I always had problems with, because there's different codes. He works off the one code, and obviously.
Okay.
He's NFPA.
Yeah, and then obviously, you've been talking about the building code, when you start, one thing causes an issue for another, and that's where it was difficult trying to, making sure that you don't do one thing that actually was okay for one guy, and then not okay for the other.
Right.
And I didn't understand totally, obviously, on that.
Right.
Okay.
But, and that's something with, with Architect was nice, when he was there, he just gave us, I guess, his experience and knowledge of what, hey, yeah, that works for both, you know, or no, you know, one of the issues obviously was the exact placement of the fire doors, you know? They had to have another separate meeting because the actual person comes out and he inspects them. He's like, "Well, that's a different thing." So I mean, literally, I wanted to walk around with him and say, "Alright, if I put a door right here, is that good?"
Right.
We don't, so I, literally, we walked around with a piece of paper and said, "Okay, well, I'm not sure I'll check on that. We'll have to get back to you." I mean.
And the architect did spend time, Brad, in Lincoln too, with their draft people, to try to figure out where they needed to go.
And I don't know, Ralph was very informative and very hadn't knowledge and stuff. So I just didn't know whether or not you were thinking, or what you were thinking, or utilizing. He was very beneficial to have at that meeting, because obviously, he brings, in my case, he brought a lot of knowledge to it that I didn't have, or we didn't.
Right, right. What's Ralph, do we have Ralph's contact information?
I do in here, Ryan. I'll look in my.
He had the, I guess, you know, the building knowledge, Ryan, you know, yeah, the architect or this fire marshal will tell you, "Yeah, you need to do this to fix it." He would look at it on a construction perspective and say, "Okay, this is the easiest way to do it. Does that still make you happy? You know, is it still qualified?" That's kind of what I noticed with him, you know, walking around with him and the fire marshal.
Because he brings an aspect of, we never wanted to say, "Okay, if we can," like I said, that was one of the initial things, "Alright, we put egress windows in." "Okay, great. Fire marshal say, "I'm happy about that. No issues." "Well, our problem isn't, except for those other six issues now, you just, by not addressing." I don't want to wastefully spend money in one area and turn around and find out we have to do something different in another. And that's, that's where the two people are helpful.
Just a thought, and whatever you want to do here, Ryan, but, you know, Don Zeggers said that he had a lot of experience with codes and building, and, you know, is that a thought you might want to entertain as a, as a community member, perhaps?
Well, I've asked Corey Firstnott and Ron Gild, both three community members.
And Ron has a lot of experience too.
Or Corey's done a little bit of work on this, and Ron has, knows the school like the back of his hand, you know?
Yes, he does, yes, he does.
But, I, no, I think Don is a resource also, you know? He's actively constructing, you know, things from the ground up, you know, so.
Okay, here's Ralph's contact information. His phone is four zero two nine three four seven seven four nine.
Seven seven four nine?
Seven seven four nine. His cell phone number is four zero two nine eight zero six nine zero five. His email address, tell me if you're ready.
Yep.
Is rgladbach, which is G-L-A-D-B-A-C-H at Cox, C-O-X dot net.
Are you looking for some water to wash that down?
I've got bottles of water in there.
I can see the look on your face.
Anybody need one? Sweet? Really good? Anybody else need water? I'll take a water, Krista, I can there. I want cake, too.
You should have brought a Ziploc bag. A tank takes them.
Yeah. I was in expression.
You know what, they would probably, they would probably like you to do, take some home for the kids. They usually are very good.
Kids, it's for me.
Oh, for you!
Thank you.
It almost looked like a real force, didn't it?
You bought me water, right?
Yes, thank you. Too much coconut.
Thank you.
Do you want to walk through all of the corrections, Ryan? What would you like to do at this time? Do you want to walk through that order, so that we can maybe discuss which ones have already been completed?
Have been addressed or completed?
Yes, yes, yes. Up to you guys what you want to do at this time.
Yeah, that's me.
We do have a special meeting at three thirty, so.
Yep, no, that's, we can watch that.
Okay. Then I am starting on this page right here, with the plan of correction.
From the, what's the date?
The date on that, June ninth.
That'd be real effective, if they come back towards you. Fifteen points.
Now, according to the printer, Google, if we were able to assemble this right there on the copier, we would be able to put page numbers at the bottom of those things, but that's a year ago. Okay, so looking at that first order, operable windows for rescue, and you do want to highlight there that no classrooms. So we didn't have one classroom that had the appropriate windows. And that's when Kenny and Brad started really visiting with the architect about, "Okay, so we would have to replace every," yes. And so that's when the sprinkler option came into being there. So again, after your visits with everyone, that could be rewritten to say, possibly you want to consider lease purchasing, or creating a special fund for a site. It does have this, and I'm not familiar with that at all, the levy, the special tax, because it does say that that could go seventeen and five tenths cent for a special tax. You don't, it doesn't require a bond election by state law, but it does require that the special levy be submitted to the voters at the next general or special election. Well, to me, that still means that it's an election. Right, I mean, it's not a bond, it's a special tax, but it still goes to the voters. So the lease purchase does not, but you only get seven years to pay that back too, which right now, current budget status would be doable for those two projects. It wouldn't be doable for all of those projects, obviously, because that was six point nine million. But for those two, it would be doable. Okay, so that's, that's number one. Number two, that was the basement, fourth floor. Again, they said that the sprinkler system would fix number two. Number three, that's the fire doors. They are expensive. The fire marshal was collaborating with the architect to try to determine placement of those doors. They have had some visits in Lincoln. Sean was not comfortable giving the architect the exact locations of those doors, but did ask that he go to Lincoln and collaborate, and I don't know the results of that collaboration.
Also, each door, no, because they were still in.
Yeah.
The middle level, the middle level was the issue. They know, they know the top and bottom have to be done.
Or you walk into the building?
Yeah, well, she had this basically split level. And that was the concern, whether or not this, the mid-level was taking vertical movement out of it by, it's a simple thing, where the top and bottom obviously take out, I mean, it makes sense. But they were having discussion whether the middle, whether they could get away with actually putting a door right in the middle of the hallway downstairs, which would stop the vertical movement of any air. And that, they went back and forth, which obviously, I mean, these door, each door is like ten grand to do, because they have to be tied in, and have to be certain metal, and blah, blah, blah. But it's over ten grand per set of doors, is what he guesstimated without, you know, in the past. But that was the major discussion back and forth, whether, because that, what he does. Then it takes out, takes out a couple of doors, and also, otherwise, for the way it looks, it's not going to be the prettiest because of those doors. Basically, we're going to add a little box around each, each of the stairwells. But that was some of the discussion, and if they went a little more money, they thought we could get a curtain which drops down in the event.
Yeah, like I said, that was, I don't think, we never did earlier, the thing we had to run.
Never did.
He had the meeting with them, and they were still going back and forth with the fire marshals planning to be.
The other issue is the chairlift on the stairs down there. You know, you have to put a fire door there, and you're going to have to accommodate that chairlift also. That's the. That was the other difficulty. That's why we were trying to downstairs do just the door in the middle of the hallway, instead of walking off the stairs.
And we just didn't know how, yeah, how not to make that look ugly too.
Yeah, because it's going to have to box clear out into the hallway to have another room. Sorry.
Doing great. Okay, and number four, that's all that piping interference that we have to do to get to lunchroom, which the fire marshal is still allowing us to use that to go to lunch. He was fine with that as long as we didn't have class down there. The HVAC took care of that. And again, we do have nineteen fifty-nine boilers. Has everyone been to the boiler room? Chris, have you been down there?
Yeah.
Ryan, you've been down there too?
Yeah.
Okay, and Dave, you were down there? Okay, and I know you three have been down there, but that piping, by changing from nineteen fifty-nine steam boilers, gas-fired, to the HVAC, that eliminates all the piping issues there.
Just taking it out.
Takes them completely out.
That would be, I don't know, I'm not going to be able to make that meeting, Ryan, with the fire marshal. That would be one thing to discuss with him on that. I mean, I'd like to see some clarity on there, on that headroom, because I know he was.
I want clarity on that too, Kenny, because, yeah, Ralph said some issues down there, or some headroom is like six foot ten. And the fire marshal says it has to be a minimum of seven foot. The IBC code said it has to be a minimum of seven foot six inches. We'd love some clarity on that.
Because even the.
Which is it?
Even the ramp, that's actually not even code.
It's low, it's low.
It's three different height levels in different areas. He was exempting us from that.
He was, he was, he was going to give us an exemption on that. And we want, we'd want that in writing too, sir. We really want that in writing, Ryan. Yeah, just, I mean, just in writing. Okay, so number five, it is unbelievable. I am sure Kenny and Brad can attest to this, the number of storage areas we have in our facility. Unbelievable. And they all require these fire barriers, unless you sprinkle. So that was number five. So, so far. Number six is done. The fire marshal came back. He inspected that. So yes, that was complete. Number seven is done. Timeframe accepted. He did a follow-up inspection on August eighth, 2014. And yes, that is done. So I know he'll come by the building, and, oh, lights are on. Yes, they are, and that's his law. Wherever our students have to escape, or someone in the building, or we've got kids in the locker room or the bathroom, if we would have a fire, they don't want those lights, stairways, and means of egress, they want it to be illuminated at all times. So, and you know what, you guys really need to thank Plenikins whenever you see them. But talk about burning the midnight oil, because again, we've got kids here, and the kids are here until six thirty at night. I know one night, they couldn't get the door shut up here. It was probably eleven thirty when they called Bert to see if I was still awake, so I could come over and lock up the doors, but that's called, yeah, burning the midnight oil. And they were awesome partners in trying to get some of these things completed, so that we could have an inspection. So they were great partners. Okay, so that is done. Seven is done. Eight is complete. And the fire marshal did come back and inspect that as well. Nine is complete. So that was finished and inspected, August eighth, so almost a full month ahead of our projected deadline, our self-imposed deadline of September 2014. Initially, initially, the report had December 2014. The fire marshal did not like that. And so he came back with an escalated timeframe. He wanted that completed before we had students occupying the area. So, and we were able to comply because Plenikins really worked hard on that. Okay, number 10 is not complete. We are still working on the fire alarm system. Phone system, tying in our phone lines as a security issue as well, so that one person can pick up the phone lines. We're having some technical difficulties doing that just because of the age and because of some of the cards. And I'm not sure exactly the technical terms. I think it is cords that are available to tie that in, but we're still working on that. That is still a work in progress. And not as expensive as some of the items that we have to deal with. Okay, number 11, that is complete. We had extra outlets installed, so that we didn't have to walk into a room and have a power surge protector with fifteen things plugged into that, and yeah, so that is, that is done. Taking care of number 11, done. Number 12, most of our stairways have the handrails. This is not an expensive or difficult fix, so that is not complete however yet. Both sides of each stairway and ramp. I think there was only one that he had issues with. So we, we will work on that, and I don't think it should be an expensive fix after we rewrite the plan. But again, when the plan went on hold, everything did, and he's just expecting another plan from us. All we would have to do on that is just revise our date, and I don't think that would be a difficult fix.
So 12 is close, is what you're saying?
Twelve, yeah, because most of them do, if you'll notice that, most of them do.
The ones that are issues is some of the nineteen thirty building, they don't have the proper height of some of their handrails. Because we have fall protection, and it's best, when we're doing architects, like, there's no reason to put handrails, because then we have to go higher on certain fall protection. Because it's not, I don't know, the heights, but whatever it is, we're like six or inch or short. So it's, when you do that, it's easier to do it at the same time.
And 13 again is a sprinkler issue, because that corridor is longer than the twenty feet. So that's, that's another sprinkler issue. So again, sprinklers do seem to solve a multitude of these correction orders. Number 14. Rob does not have the documentation on that, although we have inspected. So we, that's easy fix when we change the date on that. That is very close to done there. We'll just make sure that we've got the documentation attached to the report. Number 15, that is something that Cisco, as one of our providers in the kitchen and catchaway, they were taking a look into a possible way, we could not believe the expense on that hood. Do you remember how much that was, Kenny, Brad?
I want to say it's like ten thousand dollars per four foot.
Yeah, and so it ended up being like a hundred thousand dollars or something.
Because where that inner perimeter is, is all the way in the middle, so they can revamp the kitchen a little bit.
Move closer to the edge.
Seamless stuff.
Because I guess everywhere that there is a well, is a potential fire hazard.
Yeah, it has to be seamless.
Seamless. And so that again is something that we could rewrite, and if we remodeled the kitchen just a little bit to get that towards the, it would be a much shorter.
Right.
Seedless hood. So that, that, again, if we could do that, that would not be as expensive either, and we could, we can use that building fund money back. could use that building fund money back. This is another one of those that we need a little bit more guidance from the Fire Marshal on, is the persimmon curtains, the fire protections, apparently that space is high. That is also where we had our fire department come and visit the school.
Because of that dead area on the stage, it requires a sort of fan, so in the event that would actually suck some of that wood wire, it's kind of a weird deal with the plant. Fancy exhaust fan, they have to have an interior thing, so in the event that it is smoking, it will actually suck something about it.
Right. But again, the architect thought that that was fairly affordable, could possibly use some of those building fund monies, but the Fire Marshal did not indicate that that was near the priority that the sprinklers or the HVAC were. So in consideration, again, that would probably be just a date change with regards to the board's signed response on that, after the Building and Grounds team has a chance to meet a little bit more in detail with regards to some of that. Should we flip to Westward, which is the end of your strategic planning package? Ryan, you want to go through this one as well?
Yep, might as well keep going here.
All right, we've got about seven minutes. Okay. Number one, we have movable walls at Westward, which is a security concern, but the Fire Marshal's concern was that some of those walls were moved, so that some of our students didn't have a secondary means of egress. So there was only one door into the room, and there was not an additional exit or window for our kiddos to get out of the room. So that is why he wrote that correction on there.
Well, before we continue, have any of these been addressed?
No, number one has not been addressed. We were trying to move a couple of bookshelves, so they could get access.
Right, but I mean, any of the eight, have any of the eight been addressed?
Some of them, yes. Yeah. This one, we're not sure how to address.
Number one.
No, without doing maybe some portable classrooms or something like that, because we do not have title space over there, we do not have ELL space, we don't have guidance space, we don't have spec space. So not sure on that. That's going to take some Building and Grounds team brainstorming to do that. Okay, number two, they did, was this the one, Brad, Kenny, where they could put in a window? For that one classroom that didn't have a window, for that dead-end space? They didn't like the distance that they had to travel, and they wouldn't consider the kindergarten room to be a means of egress?
That's because it stops, and the doors go into the kindergarten rooms. Right, Brad, if you took that corridor and punched it through to the outside, then it would be, it's due to the fact that.
Or sprinkle.
Yeah, or sprinkle. It's the fact that it exits into another room, instead of exiting outside.
Number three, that emergency lighting, that is done. Number four, this was something we were not aware of, but we have a lot of exit discharges at the Westward facility. So everywhere there's an additional door, that's an exit discharge, and right now, there's not a sidewalk on those exit discharges, and the Fire Marshal is wanting all exit discharges to have sidewalks. So that is why the board team decided to put that on hold in light of possible classroom additional space, possible multipurpose room space, so that has not been addressed, and it is on hold, and whatever the Building and Grounds team decides we need to do to move forward, it could possibly be addition of quite a few sidewalks, because we have an exit discharge in every one of those classroom areas, if not two. Carol's room has one at the end, on the west end, and so does Kelly's room, but it doesn't have, it has a wall there, which, again, the Fire Marshal does not like the wall there, it should be a clear means of egress. So that'll be some initial brainstorming. Number five has not been addressed either, with the fire barrier doors. Number six has been addressed, the kick-down doorstops are gone. The quarters do not have the fire resistance rating doors, okay, but the kick-down doorstops are gone. Number seven, the continuously lit means of egress, that has been addressed. And that was especially at the main front door there. Okay, and number eight has not been addressed. Again, considering possible modular classrooms, or building addition, or whatever the board would like to consider over there for that classroom space that has temporary walls without windows. So those are the items facing you as a team. And I know this is a thick packet, again, but feel free to come and visit with me about anything. I do not have all the answers, but I will find the people that do have the answers for you. And we can get some further direction on how to proceed. Any other questions before we have a special meeting? Restroom? Thank you, I know that was a very long day, but it went quick.